...is to provide all students with the skills, confidence, and passion for lifelong learning so that they may find their own paths of successful careers, active citizenship, and rewarding lives. Unfortunately, we have to go right into executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, and to come back once we're done with that. So, we're gonna go off the air, and we're gonna ask you all to go outside of the room. It's going to be very quick, I believe.
Okay.
We'll come get them after.
Yes, we need a motion to go into executive session. And we need roll call.
Do we go into executive session?
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, we're gonna take a roll call vote to go into executive session. So, you have to call out each of our names.
That we are caught up and that's a working document. So each year I can review it with the principal and administration and we can add to it, take out, change, whatever need be so that we can fit the needs of the district.
Yeah, I think adding that, having that communication aspect for parents is really important for the coaches and the players. So yeah, thank you.
So we need to act, we are just going to approve it for the athletic department. So I need a motion.
I can move that we approve the team captain handbook as well as the student athlete handbook for the 2019-2020 school year.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We'll bring him back with the next handbook, which will be the coaches handbook at a later date.
He has, he says to stay for his next one.
Yes.
A budget update. Mr. Cassidy.
Good evening, everyone. Happy school year. I forwarded a report to the superintendent to be delivered to you. It's a final end of the year report, expenditure report for FY19. The format is, was entered into the format similar to our budget. That's, it kind of looks like our budget instead of the Munis format. And it's really lining up a presentation for what was budgeted in FY20. So you've got, you've got that information there. In my memorandum, I really stressed that I will be back to make some final adjustments to the FY20 budget. And I've done it for the last two years in a row and I'm sure the previous business manager did it before me, which is as of May 1st, we think, we know who we're going to have and then they leave and we rehire and we just make those adjustments. So I'll be coming in with salary adjustments. I'm not, at this time, I'm not seeing a lot of other expense adjustments. It's really just salary. And I'll talk about the hiring in the next report, but, so you'll be, you'll be expecting to see that. Another report that you'll be seeing within the next month or so is an end of the year report. So, just so you know, what I do is that I have all these expenditures. I have to report them to the state on different levels, whether it's a school-based level, district level. So you've signed off on that many years. So I take that data, I put it into the state report and then I provide it to the school committee for approval as well. So you'll see that within the next month.
Did you have any questions about the budget? Updates? Nothing?
The format is great to read through. It's very clear. You can understand, you know, where the numbers have gone. It's very concise and easy to understand.
Thank you. Looks a little different than that Munis report, which is, which I'll continue to do on a quarterly basis. Let's get through the big transfer and then I'll provide a report. And then I believe it's the December, March, and May, I'll be providing a quarterly report for you. But I'll, likely I'll sneak one in there in October, beginning in November, just so, just so you can see what's going on.
So with this budget update, you just want us to accept it?
Yes.
Correct? So I need a motion to accept his budget update. We're not approving, just accepting it.
Make a motion to approve the budget update as presented.
My second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so now you have your personal update for us, right?
So we did have a burst of resignations at the end of the, end of the school year. So I'm happy to report, as of today, we've filled all of our positions, all of our teaching positions, all of our parent positions, coaching secretaries are filled. Strangely enough, we still have a part-time custodian position at the Turkey Hill Elementary that we're having a hard time filling. So I know Mr. Londa has a plan for coverage for that. But our instructional staff is, has been hired. Just a reflection on some of the resignations. Those resignations, there's stories for every single one of them, either wanting to work closer to home or some promotional opportunities. So we do investigate a little when someone does leave the district. So no hard feelings there. Okay.
Did they have to give us any time? They don't, they can make an announcement like two days before school? Did they, or did they all give us like two weeks' notice before school started?
It was, it was primarily a two-week notice.
Okay.
So I know that our superintendent works with the superintendents of the teachers that we just hired. So there are these conversations about letting teachers go immediately, or is there, does a district need transition? So those conversations take place professionally in case we did have a hard-to-fill position.
Okay.
And we wouldn't want to leave any other district with a hard-to-fill position. So in cases like that, we would work out a delayed start date for the individual that we would be taking from another district. And the same could be true for us, working out a delayed start for somebody who's leaving us. We didn't, we didn't have any of those positions leaving late in, in the summer that we thought were going to be very difficult to fill.
Just one more item, which is a, we are finalizing all the advisors at the high school and middle school, finalizing all those post and extent appointments. So that should be done this week as well.
Okay.
Majority of them are done. There's just a couple, a couple ones, they just need to resolve. So that being said, the, with the hiring complete, it's really tied to the transfer that I'm going to be proposing at some point in the future. I know what everyone's going to be making. I'll know, I'll know what type of adjustments I'll have to make. So this is the moment I've been waiting for, which is a complete hiring, which is like a step, cleaning up some of my files in my office with things. So I'll report back to the committee as soon as possible. Okay?
Okay. So with this item, you want us just to approve it? The update, your update?
You need to, you need to accept it. And by accept it, just to clarify this, by accepting it, you're accepting all these resignations, you're accepting these retirements, and you're accepting these new hires that are coming before you.
Okay. I need a motion to accept.
Make a motion to accept personnel update from Mr. Cassidy.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm abstaining in the minutes. My wife's sister is listed, Corinne Jones, as a parent professional.
Oh, correct. Okay. All right. So it's some, four with one abstaining. Now we are going to the LEA memorandum of agreement.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cassidy.
So as you know, in the development of the budget, some of the cuts that were made to close the gap were stipended positions. Department heads at the high school, building leadership teams, stipends at all of the other schools. We were engaged in some dialogue throughout late last spring and continued that dialogue with the LEA leadership over the summer. We are all in agreement that these are important positions that none of us really wanted to see go. And we worked creatively to work within the stipends that were budgeted, keep our schedule intact, not having to reschedule the high school, with a couple of other non-monetary means of compensation for their time. And we're in agreement that we think that this is a fairly good compromise to keep these important positions intact while still honoring the budget that was developed. So I would, I would recommend that we accept them. I know that the LEA met last week with their membership and ratified this agreement. So now it's up for you for discussion or vote to approve.
I would move to accept the memorandum of agreement as presented, September 4th, 2019, with the Lunenburg Education Association.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And do you have a copy for us to ratify?
I do.
Okay. O donation for school supplies from the Salvation Army.
We had a delightful surprise the first week of school. Some folks from the Salvation Army came in with a great big tote full of school supplies, everything from boxes of crayons to pencils, rulers, index cards, notebooks, you name it. So we would recommend that you accept this donation and we will be dividing all of these materials amongst the four schools.
I'd accept the donation from the Salvation Army about the school supplies.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Just wanted to ask the superintendent, are there certain items that you're looking for, that the schools are looking for, that the public or organizations in the public would be able to donate?
Your typical school supplies. As an example, last year, we had a local dentist office had gathered, collected school supplies in their office from their patients.
He does that every year.
And then came in and delivered boxes of your typical school supplies.
I've seen like tissues and wipes, hand wipes and sanitizer and things on a wish list that teachers have sent out in the past.
Yes. And I can tell you that as we, Mr. Cassidy and I, were welcoming the first and second graders as they were coming down the hall day one, they were coming in with backpacks I think that were as big as they were, and big bags full of supplies like tissues. It was amazing to watch.
I think one of the things they always look for at the primary school is wipes for the cafeteria, for peanut butter, stuff like that on their hands and when they go back.
We have to be careful about what we use. It needs to be Mr. Londa approved.
I thought it was baby wipes. Unscented baby wipes?
That might, that might be acceptable.
Okay. I think that's what they had always asked for. So if people are looking to donate something, maybe that, they go through those very fast.
Yeah, I think it would be good to have a list even that the public can know what is available and what we need.
Sure. We could post something like that on the website.
Yeah.
You know, supplies that would be appropriate, grade-appropriate for each school.
Thank you.
The Passios Building Design Committee appointee. So the town manager reached out and would like a school committee representative on the Passios Building Design Committee. I don't have information on when they're going to meet, or what time, or how often, just that if, once the committee is set up, they will decide that. So I just wondered if any of you would like to volunteer to sit on that committee, because you're not doing anything else.
Depending on when they meet, yeah.
I know, and that's why I asked, but they don't actually have that information. I knew that we would all want to know when, but they don't have that information to give me until the committee is fully developed.
Can we table?
And then it will be based on, I guess, everyone's availability.
Well, I may have a conflict with the APDC.
Okay.
Beyond both.
Right. So we'll just pull you out of the running. Okay.
But I'll, it would be an interesting topic to.
Yeah, I know, it would be. Yeah.
I wouldn't mind doing it. If Brian, if you're interested.
Yeah, either one.
Come up in the evening. Maybe Brian could do it. I'm available during the day.
Well, they won't know until they have the committee set and then you guys, as a committee, would decide when you can meet, is basically what she's saying.
Okay.
You know, it would be up to the committee to decide when you're going to meet.
Okay.
Okay. So did you want to, Brian? I can tell Heather that you're the go-to guy on that.
Sounds good.
Okay.
So then I move that we appoint Brian as the Passios Building Design Committee appointee from the school committee.
Yep.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, now we're going to fall athletics report. Mr. Bunnell. Hello.
Hello.
Just like last year, when I first got here, I figured you guys would be asking for an update of participation numbers. So when Dr. Burnham had asked me about the handbook things, I was like, well, I can do this at the same time. So I put together comparatively the end of the season numbers last year to the numbers current as of last Wednesday. So these numbers have changed.
Oh, they have?
Not the high school ones, but the middle school ones.
Oh, okay.
The high school, last day for registration for high school sports was on Friday last week. So I think there's maybe one or two more that have joined cross-country.
Oh, okay.
But nothing, for the most part, they are what they are. And then the middle school numbers, those have, especially on the middle school cross-country side.
I was going to say that.
A lot.
Okay, good.
So this is the breakdown. I know there is, comparatively to last year, there is, you can see there is a decrease in some of the sports. But looking at it at the surface, I was, I panicked when I saw that. I'm like, what's going on? But at the same time, there was a big class that went out and the class that was, the freshman class that came in last year wasn't as big. So then, and then even the kids that came in this year, they're still not as caught up to what had left. And I know that's going to be a reoccurring theme for some of the winter sports and especially some of the spring sports. Like I can tell you that boys lacrosse, they lost, I think it was.
Ten or something? No, maybe it was more than that. Yeah.
Like it was, I think it was 16 or 17 seniors moving on and there was only two freshmen on the team. So that.
Well, I see that trend gonna, is going to happen with football soon.
Yes.
So with the low numbers of football, what is your plan with that?
This is, this is a, I actually have a meeting tomorrow with all of District E, the central high schools, because this is a theme that's been being seen in a lot of other districts.
Okay.
Relatively speaking, Littleton, Littleton, Quabon, Air Shirley, Bartlett, actually they're a lot smaller than us, but they're all, they're all in the same boat, like numbers-wise. And Quabon, the last time I spoke with them, they're at 29. Littleton is at 37 with a couple of eighth graders. Bartlett, who we play this year, they're at 21, but only suiting up 18 for their varsity football program. Air Shirley was at 22, but their youth program didn't have enough, so they were able to send all their eighth graders, 13 of them, up into the high school to have a JV team. So that number is, yeah.
Is there any, like, thought about co-op?
And that's what I'm going to be speaking to schools about to see.
Okay.
Because, I mean, it even seems to be an issue with some of the larger schools as well. I know just as recent as today, not football-wise, but Marlboro, which is a district of over 1,000, they had to request eighth-grade waivers to fill their girls JV soccer and girls JV field hockey.
Wow.
Because they did not have enough.
Wow.
So it's a, it's a trend that is being seen not only in a smaller district like us, but now you're talking districts with over 1,000-plus enrollment that are having trouble being able to fill the team from just their high school population. And some of the smaller schools, like Gardner, for example, we received notification that they could not fill the boys JV and girls soccer program this year. So it's, it's a weird trend and you can't, from trying to pinpoint it, there's so many different schools that are, different sports are being affected. So it's, I know it's going to be a very big topic of discussion to try to sort this out, because we want to see as many kids involved as possible and we got to find a way to make that happen as athletic directors.
And then I go to the field hockey in middle school.
Yeah.
Which is completely the opposite.
Right. So.
21 eighth graders.
And there was, I think there was two more that signed up. I don't know if they were in eighth grade, but I think they have a total of like 37 now participate.
So how many coaches do you have?
Two.
Just, okay, two.
Yeah. And field, I had middle school cross-country.
Two full-time coaches? Is one of them, are they both teachers?
Yes.
Okay.
And then middle school cross-country, I believe they're over 50 now.
Oh, okay, good, because that was.
Because that was, yeah. When you see that, I was.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing.
Middle school takes usually a little bit, their, their registration is extended as well.
Well, they didn't start until this week. Yeah, they start later?
Yeah.
Middle school sports start later than high school sports? Okay. I just, yeah.
And I still have kids asking for volleyball and, and other sports that we don't have. I'm trying to figure out a way to, to do that as well. So.
And with our population being so small, it's hard to add in sport.
Right, because I don't want to, right. And that's why the, last year, I was able, I was fortunate enough.
From some other sport and.
Right. Last year, I was fortunate enough, with the blessing of you guys, we started the swim co-op and the, and the girls ice hockey co-op. So kids that weren't doing anything, the eight kids that did participate between those two sports, now we gave them an opportunity. And the ones that have asked for volleyball haven't, they don't participate in a fall sport currently. So.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Would we be able to co-op that?
Because I am very leery of, I don't want to start something to pull from something else, because then I'm just.
Would we be able to co-op it?
I'm trying to figure that out. That's, yeah.
Because I've heard about volleyball for a while.
Yeah.
The interest in it. And I would hate to have someone not be able to do something.
Right. And I'm, I'm working on it.
Yeah. Okay. All right.
I guess the only thing that really kind of starts to add to it is boy soccer last year, the 10th graders who are now 11th graders. It went from 12 to 6.
Yeah, I see that too.
The six of the incoming juniors just decided not to do soccer.
I know.
That seems like a big jump.
There is some, like, I know in some sports, I didn't specifically look at who is and who's not playing. I know in some sports, like for instance, we had some kids that played golf last year that are now playing football, some people that are playing football that are now playing golf. So they switched. They're also with soccer, I don't know if it's directly correlated, but a lot of kids tend to play club.
Yeah.
I was thinking club.
Especially in the, they're, they want to be scouted more. And the scouts look at club more than they do college scouts.
Are there cuts at the soccer level? No?
No, because of the waivers.
No, no one, not any, no sport made cuts.
The numbers are low.
Thank you.
The numbers are where they are, where we don't have to.
Whereas last year with this year, and as that trend continues, it can help hopefully guide some discussion.
Yeah.
I think it's great to not making cuts as well as giving a lot of, all the kids the opportunity to play.
Any other questions? Comments?
No.
No?
Looks good.
Thank you, Mr. Bunnell.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, budget timeline. Trying to figure out when we were going to start discussions on the budget.
So I didn't know, you know, how you felt about last year and the timeline that we used with a full budget presented in mid-December when we don't have the governor's budget figures. We, we don't at that time have a target budget from the town manager. So I'm just trying to get your, your sense on how you felt about the process and if you want to make any changes.
I feel like holding off into January is not a bad idea at all. Beginning in December, it feels like the never-ending.
Budget.
Budget. That, what, what you see in December with all the changes, I'd almost rather wait that little while longer and have an initial presentation not be that far from what.
Is realistic.
Reality is, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, because last year, we didn't even talk to the town manager before that December meeting.
Right. And the town manager wouldn't have had any projected targets for us that early.
Really, the governor's budget really sets the, kind of the minimum of where it's going to go. So it's a good place to start.
Exactly. And you know what? We, we had discussion in our workshop as well about being able to hear more about what's going on in our district. And, you know, perhaps some of the time when we were having early discussions that weren't as relevant, to be able to have, you know, different speakers and presentations and things that, that give us a glimpse of the district would be great.
Slightly different. And the, the process that we followed last time, I was.
Yes, the process itself, yeah.
Process. From a timing perspective, bringing it to the school committee and the public may not be appropriate to bring things that early with so many unknowns.
Right.
But at the same time, that early start with you and leadership team was necessary to get a framework. And I think that from, from that perspective, you guys starting early is, still makes sense.
Yeah, we're not making any changes to our start time.
Yeah. So presenting to us and the public, I think, does make more sense to wait a little till we get a little more guidance from the town and the governor's budget. So I would agree with that.
Did you want to wait till January or February?
Maybe Mr. Cassidy could join the discussion.
February, you think it's too late?
The governor's budget typically comes out at the end of January.
That's what I thought. Yes, Carol?
Can I just say that sometime during the month of September, the town manager is going to present to the finance committee what her process is and how that looks and how she arrives at the numbers. So if after that presentation, there is something that, you know, we may want to look at again, we can do that at that time. But I just wanted you to know that that was going to occur sometime during the month of September.
Okay. Mr. Cassidy?
Yeah, I mean, I know the town manager gives directives to all of her managers on when she wants their department budgets. If we can align our budget to present, to present our budget to you and then hand it over to the town manager right around her deadline, which is probably around the beginning of February, end of January, somewhere around there. It's, we should still present. The superintendent should still present some initiatives or plans that she may have in December to kind of meet. I think there's a requirement in the, in the bylaws that we have to present something to you. So I still want to, whether it's a philosophical presentation with, with some numbers, of course, I still think we need to do that. And finally, we, the superintendent and I talked about this today, just the, the number of contracts that we need to settle. This is, if there's a year to, to kind of push it back a little, this is, this is definitely the year to, just so we can prepare a budget that is more representative, more representative of what we're going to, going to approve. So.
So that would be something to do at a televised meeting at town hall, so like the first meeting in February?
To present the full budget?
Yeah.
Sure.
What do you think?
That's the full budget at the town's limit, or the full budget that the schools would like to see. Because I would, I personally like seeing what the schools need.
Higher.
And identifying those differences that we can articulate to the town as early as possible, so that we can come up with some creative ways of trying to fill some of those gaps.
So one of the possibilities, and there are several possibilities, and it doesn't have to be decided this evening. But I thought it would be worthwhile to start having some conversation about what this year's budget process was going to look like. But it's possible that we could identify priority needs, put an estimated value on those needs, and maybe frame that in the context of a level-funded budget in addition to what it might look like as an increase above our current budget.
I think it warrant, probably some more discussion.
Yeah.
As we start thinking about.
Sure.
Possibilities.
I think it may have been this year, we, there were a lot of budgets floating out there at one point and, maybe I, maybe, because I was, I was developing them that I. Maybe I, maybe, because I was, I was developing them that I, I, you know, I, I don't want to get, um, the, the public lost.
Right.
I mean, I, I certainly am lo, you know, I know what the budget I'm working on, but as we present things, I just, I, I want to be clear to the residents what is, is being talked about and what is, what was being proposed, and, you know, just, I, I, I felt, it was a strategy that the superintendent and I used every time that we spoke about the budget, we, we always did a little history lesson of how we got to this moment, and i- it was, it was, I felt that we had to do that just because there were so many budgets kicking around.
There were.
Yeah.
Yeah, and people enter, from the community, enter-
At different steps.
Paying attention to this process at different points.
Yeah.
So, you know, to provide that context for-
Yeah.
Where we started, how this has evolved, I think is important, um, so that people, as they jump in, have the context.
I still certainly think that we need to see a budget proposal from the superintendent based on the student needs, regardless of the guidance from the town, and that should be our baseline, in my opinion. This is what our schools need. If the town comes back with a different guidance, then we need to work with the town to try to fill that gap.
So something similar to what we did last year, but not as early-
But not as early.
Where we have some more realistic numbers to be working with.
And where we have some more numbers instead of this fluctuating thirty percent either direction.
Okay.
Yeah, I think using the state numbers as well, I think when you see that, that'll help a little bit too in the, the adjustment.
Right, because in December, there were so many unknowns, and, you know, through the course of next year, I can't really project when contract negotiations with all of those, um, bargaining units, when, when that is concluded, I, I can't even project when during the year that might be the case. So there will continue to be some unknowns throughout the process, but at least we would have the governor's numbers as a base.
You know, like, my, our, our focus is the needs of the students, and that, that has to be what we-
Present.
Strive for.
Yeah.
And present to the finance committee and the, um, and the town manager, and see how they can help accommodate that. We took a hit this year in this booming economy that we shouldn't have had to hit, and I think it's, we need to put it out there, this is what we need, before you start giving us cuts immediately.
Okay.
My two cents, your mileage may vary.
I would be in agreement with you, Jim.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, and the way you laid it out last year in terms of how each need and line item related to a district goal, just gave that further, um, you know, further information for folks to realize this isn't just a line item, we have a vision, and this is how this particular line item helps get closer to that.
Okay.
Absolutely.
The other thing that, you know, we'll be working on as well, um, is perhaps what, what some of our identified needed positions to execute the district strategic plan, what that might look like in a two, three, four-year layout, like, what's the priority for this FY twenty-one? What could we wait another year to bring on board? And we can, we can go in that direction as well, and identify if, if we have to phase in identified needs over a period of time, what we reasonably think we can delay another year or two.
Mr. Londa typically does that in his budgets, which is very helpful.
Right.
When you look at, yeah.
Yeah, and capital planning does it too, the co, the committee, it's a forecast.
Right.
So to forecast out what our needs are and what the needs will, that won't go away-
Right.
Even when they're not funded.
Right.
So I think the community needs to see that they're not being filled, we still need them.
Right.
Just like a fire department might need a new fire truck.
Correct.
A curriculum.
And prioritized.
Yeah, yes, exactly, in the same fashion that they do for capital planning. All right, so this one is, um, we don't need to decide on that right now. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cassidy.
Well, he can stay.
Oh, he's staying for school choice funding, okay.
Yeah, I'm going to be here for a while. I forwarded a memorandum to the superintendent to be forwarded to the committee regarding, uh, school choice, and, um, there, there was an inquiry from the public regarding, um, uh, costs, what the, what the district gets, and the, the data that I provided here is basically information from the DESI website as far as the coming and goings of sending students and receiving students in, in Lunenburg uh, over the last nine years on page one, as far as the enrollment goes. Obviously, uh, school choice is, is an opportunity for a district to take in, uh, students from other areas if space allows. So, uh, we do implement that in Lunenburg at, at our high school level. Essentially, every receiving district gets, um, approximately five thousand dollars for a general aid student. So a, as students come in, w- we get payments from the state on a monthly basis. On the, the other end, the, uh, the sending students, we, we basically get a reduction in our, uh, our, our revenues from the state, so they take it right, right off of the cherry sheet. Uh, on the second page is, is a much more detailed, uh, chart as far as our receiving and sending and associated dollar amounts that the district, um, has gained and, and lost over, over the number of years. Uh, to meet the timeline, uh, to, to get this report to the committee, we started doing data digging on, uh, student data as far as where students are going. Uh, there's no reflection on that, uh, perhaps if, if that's something that the committee is interested in, we can share that data out in the future as we, um-
Okay.
As we, um, but it was just a, um, just bad timing, and, and just to crunch with the number, the other, a bunch of other reports, we, I did get the, the student data, I, I, I'm not, um, prepared to, to report out on it, it's, it's basically from the state and on some spreadsheets, we can, um, present that and, and a report to you in the coming weeks.
Yeah, that would be a good thing to have, so we know where they're going and why they're leaving. It might give us more of an idea if they're all going to charter schools as opposed to a different district.
Well, yeah, that, that data exists, so we can, we can find out if they're going to charter schools in, in another district, and, um, as far as why they're leaving, I, I don't, I don't think the data, the state collects that data.
Speaks for itself.
Um, but it, it, I'll, I'll look into that.
Okay.
I, I, maybe it does exist, I, I'm not sure.
Um, can I just ask one question? I know that, um, prior to, I don't know prior to when, prior to, um, Air and Shirley regionalizing, the Shirley kids, a lot of them came here, um, is that reflected in this? Because I know it wasn't school choice purely, there was some other agreement or something, um, but when you look at in nineteen ninety-six, let's say a hundred and seventeen full-time pupils were coming, was that because there was no high school in Shirley? Is that what this, these, these numbers, some of that reflects?
This is, this is raw data, and I can, I can take, definitely take a look into that. I, I did see the, um, um, some of the data from the state, and, and a lot of it is Air Shirley. Our, our students are going to Air Shirley.
Yeah, but previously, when there was no high school in Shirley, those kids were coming between, um, Air and Lunenburg, they got to pick, and I didn't know if those kids were included in this graph or not.
Yeah, they were school choice students, and we had a contract, yeah.
I don't know that they called them school choice.
No, but they were, yeah, they were, and then the, the contract ended, and the last of them phased out, um, when I was on school committee and Loxie was here.
Yeah, because I know my son graduated in two thousand and eight, and I know there were kids from Shirley here then.
It went longer than two thousand and eight for sure.
It did, yeah, it did.
So I didn't know if these numbers reflected those kids, in which case, why aren't so many kids coming? Well, because now there's a high school.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Could be, but I, that, one of the questions I have is why since two thousand and two have the numbers gone, going out?
Gone up.
Gone up so dramatically since two thousand and twelve? All right, in two thousand and seventeen, we had a hundred and two students choosing out of Lunenburg.
Mm-hmm, yeah, that's-
And I'd really love to understand the whys around this story, because it's, it's pretty consistent up until two thousand and twelve, and it flips.
Yeah, we, we were, we were holding that advantage for-
Yeah.
Fifteen, seventeen years, and then a, a, a switch happened.
Going the other direction. And it would be interesting to know what happened with the two thousand and twelve school year. I mean, all right, I moved here in two thousand and eleven, but it's not me. I hope, but something happened.
Well, give me an opportunity to-
The state or the region, and, and at that point, I wouldn't have, I wouldn't have known what was going on.
Give me an opportunity to, to research that a bit, uh, it may not be in, um, in state reporting, it may be some historian locally may, may have some, some knowledge of that, so, and I'll, I'll include that in the report from, with the other data as well.
It's interesting to seeing the numbers and then, but the story behind the numbers, yes.
And there may be a unique story behind every single one of the students who leave, but I can tell you in conversation last year with some high school students who were interested in starting an ROTC program here, because they know they want to be military when they leave high school, they had indicated that they knew former students that choiced to a school that has an ROTC program because they knew they wanted to be military, and that was a program that they felt was important to them. So that's just one example of, you know, stories where students make choices because programs may be available in other schools that are not available to us.
Yeah, I think it's important to keep that data, if you can get those exit interviews, get that information, and we can use it, depending on if it's plausible or not feasible, to actually add programs to, to fit the needs of the citizens.
So these students that are leaving are, are affecting our budget.
Clearly.
Yeah.
Um, so, you know, it's, um, we, we should take a look at that, absolutely, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll have to stay here for the fundraising conversation.
Okay, fundraising, Mr. Cassidy.
All right, so, um, this year, starting this year, we, um, are starting a new best practice uh, with our fundraising, with our, our, um, advisors, our student groups. And it, it, it's, there's a whole bunch of reasons to change, um, so I'll, I'll try to make sure I, I bring those points out as, as, as we talk through this, but one, one point that's not reflected in, um, this memorandum that I sent the committee about our fundraising is, uh, really, um, asking our advisors to present more data to us as far as student participation. So we're starting with, with our advisors and asking them to, um, create a mission statement for every single, every single group, as simple as it sounds, and some of them already, most groups have them, but it's, it's really emphasizing that, uh, mission statement to the students and emphasizing that mission statement through the fundraising that they're doing. So we'll get, I'll, I'll talk about that in a second too. But we're also asking them to maintain, um, attendance lists and, um, maintain communication with some of the other groups, and, and that communication is really tied to our fundraising. What we don't want is to have three or four groups, uh, doing fundraising at the high school at the same time. It's, it's a burden on families, um, it would, in my opinion, it's, it possibly affect the fundraising itself. So we're working and generating, in, in the success of, of, of the fundraising.
Like last group.
So, um, one of the first steps that we're doing is, as a group moves forward on a proposed fundraising effort, we're asking them to, to complete a form that's presented to the principal, uh, which will be forwarded to the, uh, I'm going to call it a district team, so I would imagine I'll be on it and the superintendent and the principal, and we'll, I'll have the, the club or the, the student group come in and talk about the, the activity that they want to do. Part of that is, um, is a balance sheet, so, and, and we're, we're really asking the advisors to, um, have the students do a, a balance sheet, so if they're doing a fundraiser, a T-shirt fundraiser, that they're really looking at costs and, uh, the expenses, and, and really looking at what, setting a, a selling price to, to make a, a profit, so it's, we're, we're trying to get some instruction involved in this, uh, as well as just, you know, the, the fundraising piece to it. So they'll be meeting with a, a district team, we'll, we'll kind of talk through it, um, we'll approve it, and then we'll move forward on, um, whatever costs are, that are, are expenses that are associated with it, we'll move forward through the PO process and setting up POs, so we can get the vendors paid as, as quickly as possible. Um, and then there, there's an internal system where the secretaries work closely with the, uh, the, the advisors or the teachers, making sure that those payments are, are done in a timely fashion.
Mr. Cassidy, I have one quick question, um, will athletics go through a similar process?
They do, athletic advisory.
Correct, but it, but as far as the same type of evaluation, I don't, I'm not sure that it is currently.
So I think that the distinction here is, well, first off, I, I don't give the approval for the athletic fundraisers, but here, we're trying to make this, um, an authentic learning experience for the kids, right? So they're going to have to figure out what are the costs to run this particular fundraiser, what's needed for successful execution, what's the likelihood or the projected profit? They, the kids would present to a panel that would include myself, Mr. Cassidy, and the principal. We would ask them questions, if they don't have the answers, they need to go back and continue to work out some of the detail. If they do have it well figured out, we can grant that approval right away. But it's, it's the students who are moving the request for the fundraiser forward rather than the advisor filling out a single-page form and, and sending it in. And my experience with that single-page, uh, request for an approval for a fundraiser, there's, there's really, it doesn't provide enough information to have true understanding of what all is entailed with the fundraiser that they're envisioning. So we want to make sure that it's clear, that they're able to communicate what this fundraiser is going to look like before we grant approval. With the athletic advisory, correct me if I'm mistaken, but the booster representatives on that advisory council bring forward their, their request-
To the council, correct.
Yes, yes.
Not, not the student athletes.
No, the booster representative, yes.
But they also provide a lot of information, so I think some of that information might be helpful in evaluating whatever form you're using, um, the athletic advisory does have a form to use for the-
Approval, yeah.
But to me, it sounds almost like entrepreneurship one-on-one.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
It's a little different, right.
The kids an opportunity to learn, you know- They're giving the kids an opportunity to learn, you know. I'm reminded of that I Love Lucy episode where they go to make the salad dressing. And Ricky calculates everything and says, you're losing 17 cents a quart. And so, you know, they thought they were making a mint selling it for a dollar a quart, but instead, the ingredients cost more, so they were losing money. It's trying to avoid pitfalls like that where you put in too much work and your bang for your buck is not there.
Right.
Or it's the exact same fundraiser that's been run for the last 15 years and it's the same form that's just being pushed out each year without evaluating, you know, any of the auxiliary things that we're talking about here? Or, you know, what is this even sort of benefiting?
Right. So we actually had a meeting last week with all of the advisors and we talked about limiting each group to one fundraiser a year. So we asked them to think about what their needs were, why are they fundraising, what's their intention, what will they do with the money that is raised. And rather than do a handful of small little fundraisers that net them not very much money, if you had to think about just one fundraiser, think about a broader scope on that. What could you do that would potentially net you the kind of outcome that you're looking for? I'm not saying that it's a hard and fast, that we wouldn't approve a second one if it was a reasonable request. But I think part of what was communicated last year was the interest in kind of paring back a bit on the number, the volume of fundraising efforts that were going on. And we talked with them too about being more thoughtful in when they selected to run their fundraisers. To Mr. Cassidy's point earlier, if you've got three different groups running a fundraiser at the same time, they're all likely going to experience some diminished return for their efforts because they're competing at the same time with each other. So what we had talked about was creating a calendar that all of the advisors would have access to. And once they had a proposal for a fundraiser, they could claim that real estate on the calendar and note that it was pending approval. And that way, as others are trying to plan their fundraising events, they could find a space in the calendar potentially where there is no conflict. And we could also load on the athletic fundraisers as well so that they know what other efforts are underway.
I would think that you'd also want to include the PTO fundraisers on that calendar because you could have potentially an athletic fundraiser happening at the same time as a PTO fundraiser happening at the same time as one of these advisory.
And the Boys and Girls Club one as well.
And the Boys and Girls Club, having a fundraiser as well. All hitting the same wallets.
Yeah, correct.
And I think having great student input and involvement is key because a lot of times it seemed like in past years with fundraiser, students were not super clear about what exactly they were fundraising for. Not only what it was they were offering, but what benefit it would bring, why they, it was necessary to do it for their organization.
Right.
And sometimes in the end, what students were then asked to sell or put out to the community, that money that came in, it might have been a much smaller amount of money just to purchase whatever they were actually in need of.
Right.
And there's a variety, there's a variety of fundraisers. There are all different types of things. But I think the student involvement is key because.
I just picture that if a student can sell or solicit, try to solicit a sale and can talk about a mission statement of a group, what it's going for and what the goal of the, you know, we want to raise $2,000 for this local charity or something. That's a big impact. People know in the community where it's going. I mean, this is your point, but I think that is going to have an impact on the community.
We also talked to them about coming up with ideas for fundraisers that were not only a benefit to their group or organization, but to the community. As an example, when they had the electronics recycling as a fundraiser last year, that's a benefit to members of the community. They're going to have to recycle their old electronics. They would pay someone else to take them. In this particular case, they're getting rid of their electronics and they're giving over a donation that benefits the kids. So, you know, we encourage them to think outside the box. And if they could come up with fundraising events that could potentially be a win for their group, but also a benefit to the community, that that would be ideal.
I took it down.
So did I.
That was perfect.
And the local community.
Yes.
I do recall last year's fundraiser wasn't local.
Correct.
At all. And we don't even know how successful that was. And after all the sports teams were doing their own fundraising, then they had to buy shirts from this group to wear during sport events. So that was.
Not ideal.
It was not ideal for the people who had athletes and had to participate in the Booster Club fundraiser and then the other fundraiser.
And that just, that particular scenario comes back to the original request for approval on a fundraiser. The scope of that was never fully articulated. I thought I was approving something on a much smaller scale, which is why now having an expanded application, if you will, and having an opportunity for us to talk with the kids directly about their vision for how this is all going to be executed will be, it'll be beneficial to us in deciding whether or not we're ready to approve. But it's going to be a great learning opportunity for the students. You know, we kind of stress the fact that it's been the experience of some advisors, that the kids get all excited with a new idea for a fundraiser and it gets approved and then the excitement starts to fade. And now the advisor is left kind of holding this fundraiser in their lap and having to largely execute it themselves. That's not fair to the advisors either. So we're hopeful that making some of these transitions, we'll kind of put it back with the kids, you know, and have it be more authentic and learning experience for them.
The only thing I wanted to add was just my concern that I'd have for you doing this additional work on top of what you already have. It would be great to see like a student activities director or a student activities advisor who could be more of an active participant in something like this.
Put that on the list.
Yeah.
Number 17.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay. So does this sound like a reasonable plan to test out for the year?
Yes, very much.
We can report back at the end of the year.
Yeah.
On the number of fundraisers and the success of the fundraisers and some feedback from the students and the advisors as well.
Oh, that would be great.
Sounds great.
And it would be even great to have a feedback from the community that may see a change in how they are approached as well. If the community is listening, wants to provide that kind of feedback at the end of the year.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Cassidy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
School committee operating protocols. From our last workshop meeting, we revised the protocols just a little bit. And you all have a copy of that with the little tweaks. Not a lot. Not a lot at all. So we don't have to approve that. Just wanted to make sure that we covered everything so that we could put this on the school website and have it up.
We'll put it on the website, assuming that it captures everything that was intended.
It looks great.
So we will put a revised version of this up on the website and we will get a new, enlarged, laminated version for.
To put up.
Our meetings.
Yeah, great. Okay. Onto old business. Action items, primary school, Turkey Hill Elementary School handbook, bus procedure manual, final approval. I know that there were a couple of comments and a little adjustments made to those.
I think we finally.
Are there?
Got everything that needs to be in all three documents. And certainly next year, this will be a lot easier with one unified format for all of our handbooks.
The only thing I'd say is the V in my name is capitalized.
Oh, Jim.
So I will make a motion that we approve the primary school, Turkey Hill Elementary School handbook, bus procedure manual as presented.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. You have extended day enrollment update for us?
So there was a little bit of shuffling of registrations in the last week or so. The most current numbers, Monday morning, including those who registered for the extended day program and the one hour before school option. Total students registered on Monday, 91, Tuesday, 88, Wednesday, 89, Thursday, 89, Friday, 90. For the afternoon, Monday, total, 122, Tuesday, 119, Wednesday, 123, Thursday, 126, and Friday, 114. So there have been a lot of adjustments in the last couple of weeks and the director of the program asked if I would bring forward for consideration potentially closing out registrations to bring some stability to the number of kiddos that are part of the program. If we don't want to close registrations, I would suggest that each afternoon, we keep a cap of the 125 in total. Because to get too many children into that program in the afternoon.
Right.
Might be a bit of a challenge.
Well, on Thursday, there's 126.
So that's because we relocated the one-hour option because we had, when we made the decision to relocate, we had too few.
Okay, so just want to make sure.
Additional came in after we made the call to relocate. So the 126 are current in the program.
So we're looking at the other number.
114 for the extended day.
Right.
And 12.
For the one hour.
For the one hour.
So would it be the 125 for the extended day option?
No, I'm thinking the 125 total.
For all across the board.
Since we had to relocate children. I mean, we were thinking about a cap of 125 children.
Yeah.
At TCP when it was just the extended day program.
Correct, yeah.
Now that we've relocated additional children up to TCP, I would still recommend that we cap it at 125 students total.
With the one day exception?
Yeah, we, they've been accepted into the program. I wouldn't.
Okay.
Yeah. So thoughts on any of that?
My thought, we're into the second week of school.
Correct.
And I think it's kind of hard for us to identify the needs right now because it's still new.
Right.
And rather than cut off registration on the 15th, I'd like to see us extend that to the end of the month.
Yeah.
Just to see what these next few weeks of normalcy, when we start getting back into a Monday through Friday schedule and everybody's here, what that looks like. I do agree based on what our previous discussions were about the safety of the students at TCP. So we do keep that cap at 125. So I don't know how we'd manage that without cutting off registration.
Well, it's the cap. So it would just be that we reached our cap.
So I.
Other days would be open still.
Right.
I could push out a communication to families that indicates that we're looking to close
registration September 30th with a maximum number of registrants any given day at 125. I can even report out how many spaces are currently available on each day, how many seats are still open.
Is there a concern that there's going to be enrollment throughout the school year?
I think it's a possibility. I mean, conditions change for folks. You know, we had throughout the year last year with the as-needed, we saw requests come in throughout the year. We did put, we did agree in October to put a cap on the number. But if there were seats available under that number on a given day, we would still accept registrations in. So like I said, I'm happy to set a cap and leave things open. I'm happy to, you know, again, deliver the request on behalf of the director to kind of bring some stability to the registration and stop accepting additional registrations.
I guess I would like to see some of the data or like let a month play out and see if there's actually people registering continuously. It seems like if they're going to be enrolling for the whole school year, then it would be maybe a couple of students who maybe moved to town or, you know, a parent lost their job or something like that.
Yeah, potentially.
I would agree that to make, to cap at 125 and then it, you know, if somebody moves to town in October, if there's slots open, fine. If there isn't, you know, if there's no spot, sorry, there's no spot. My other question is, what about in the morning? Is she thinking of a cap for the morning?
We had brought forward the request for the 125 seats, morning and afternoon. It is a bit more of a challenge to staff the morning.
Right.
Right now, numbers are looking pretty good and fairly stable, actually, in the morning. I don't anticipate many additional registrations in the morning. The fluctuation typically tends to be the afternoon.
But they have to enroll for the year. They can enroll just for the fall or the spring?
Putting a cap on it is similar to what we did last year. And I think that that's fine. Again, we, when we brought the original changes forward.
We had a cap.
We had a cap. We had a cap of 100 estimating a reasonable number of students for a classroom space to be approximately 25. With the addition of that fifth classroom, that raises that cap up to 125. I think it's reasonable to, again, institute the cap with the exception of the 126 that are already registered for Thursday.
Possibly revisit the registration if it becomes an issue, a continuous issue?
Sure. I mean, what we did last year is once we reached the cap, people who registered were notified that the days that they were requesting were full and that they would be placed on a waitlist. So we would do the same if we reached the cap on any given day and people wanted to register for that particular day. If we're already at 125, they would go on a waitlist. Otherwise, they would be placed in.
So I guess rather than my original thought of holding a registration open until the end of the month, let's just keep registration open until we hit the cap.
Does everybody?
So I'd make a, I'd make a motion to approve a cap of 125 students total each day with the exception of the 126 students on Thursdays.
Second?
And keep the registration open.
And keep the registration open.
Well, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
The last one. Facility fees update. Mr. Londa.
Good evening. John Londa, Director of Facilities. So the purpose I'm here tonight is I was requesting a reconsideration of the rates for facilities use that we, that school committee approved in May to go into effect on July 1. Reason why I am doing that is as I started working through the fall season and the requests for. were coming in from the fall, the requests for Lunenburg Youth Soccer didn't closely match up with what I expected as far as the number of hours their needs are. And it wasn't really a change so much as I think the data I was using in April may have been flawed for their number of hours. And so, as I looked at it, I saw that there, what we would be charging them would be substantially more than they have paid in the past and thought that that was going to cause significant problems for them. So, I re-looked at this and provided a analysis of the two primary field users, that being Lunenburg Youth Soccer and Lunenburg Youth Football. And the, so the recommendation really just affects grass fields in Lunenburg. And what I was recommending is we essentially would treat Lunenburg Primary Schools' grass field in the same way that we treat the practice field behind Turkey Hill Elementary School. They're both grass fields, but they're not our best field. And so, I was looking at making a recommendation of reducing grass field usage to $15 for Lunenburg Youth, youth sports. And then the two, both the primary school practice and the practice field, both to a rate of $13 per hour. And that, to be consistent with all of our other rates, it did, you know, cause some changes with the nonprofit Lunenburg Organization rate and the for-profit-based rates. But I tried to keep those where I thought were competitive rates as well. As you can see from the analysis on Lunenburg Youth Soccer, you know, if we didn't do anything but kept the existing rates, we would be looking then to cover about $35,000 in costs for this year, which I thought, you know, they've paid $17,000 in the last two years and need to keep them somewhere close to that number. So, based upon the rates that I'm recommending, they would be at around $17,713. And that's using the rates that they, the number of hours they've requested for this fall and the hours that they requested in this past spring. So, you know, they obviously can change it if they think they really have to be at 17, they could cut the number of hours in the springtime and still probably stay within a budget of 17,000. And then for Lunenburg Youth Football, they would see a small change mostly because they're using the practice field at Turkey Hill Elementary School for their practices. They're not as big a user, they only practice, I think, three days a week once they get into the school year as opposed to, you know, Lunenburg Youth Soccer, which is using all the fields essentially six days a week. So, I think these are reasonable numbers and I didn't really want to get invoices out to Lunenburg Youth Soccer until I had a chance to ask you to consider this change.
Personally, I'm less concerned with how much they are paying. I'm concerned about how much we as the school are paying to maintain those fields and whether or not these fees cover that expense.
So, what our costs are, for these grass fields, they're primary using the grass fields that are fenced in area or along Mass Avenue. District pays roughly $15,000 a year from April 1st through the end of November for care of that field. And that's for all three fields. So, I think we're in the ballpark. We do put lines down and we are doing that and they are benefiting from that. So, I think we're in the right range of, you know, they're covering those costs. And so, a lot of this, of course, stems back really from the bonding for the turf field from three years ago. And that was, so those numbers are, you know, a continuation of that plus the additional services we're providing.
As long as we're on the black side of that balance sheet.
Yeah, you know, we want to be there and I think at the same time, we really can't just load them up with a lot of additional costs that they're not expecting.
Understood. I mean, that's a nice way of going about it, but again, this public school fields that are owned by the public schools and their taxpayers are paying for the fields to be maintained and I want to make sure that we're not going to be out anything, especially in the extremely tight budget that we have to operate under. So, if that's the case, I would like to, at some point, kind of like to see an analysis of the, I don't know what kind of damage these kids are doing to the fields. I don't have anybody who's performed on the field, so I don't know.
Yeah, you know, it's, obviously, it's a cumulative wear and tear on the fields. This past May over the Memorial Day weekend, we ran a for-profit organization running on two of the grass fields and the turf field that generated about $9,000 worth of revenue after all the expenses were paid, but at the same time, we did have to come back in and, you know, renovate the field and oversee and took on a lot of additional care that cost about $4,500.
So, that
There was not a lot of revenue generated in that.
Well, I'm not meaning to imply that it needs to be a revenue-generating cost on it, right? It's got to at least be break-even.
Right, yeah, right.
And that we're providing fields for our student athletes and their competitions that are well-maintained
Yeah.
While allowing outside organizations to use the fields and making sure that those outside organizations are paying to make sure that those fields remain usable for our athletes.
Yeah, I think that's kind of where we are in it. I mean, you know, we're definitely not raking in lots of dollars, but I think we're maintaining the fields at an appropriate level.
We could certainly, though, do an analysis of the costs to repair or maintain
At the end of the season.
Paint the lines, right? At the end of the year.
Yeah.
In identifying, you know, perhaps if there's a change next year, how we are arriving at these numbers, not to meet a third-party's request, but to meet the requirements of
Maintenance, yep.
Yeah.
I think the way it's outlined now gives us more opportunities to have those increases in the future where it's not just charging individual groups and organizations, but actually just increasing a percentage on the fields or courts so we can have that proper increases when needed.
Yeah, I was happy that we moved to this model.
Yes.
Yes.
Outside of the individual contracts. But again, I'd like to see a little more basis to the analysis of the numbers and as long as, again, as long as we're not in the red and maintaining the fields. I'm in support of the
It'll be interesting to see if there's any change in terms of the request for hours on the facility now that it is more of an hourly type of a fee structure.
Whoopie.
So, we need to approve this.
Based on what I heard, I'll make a motion to approve the facility fees schedule as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Londa. Now, we have public comment open to the public and it is open to anything that is under the governance of the school committee.
Good evening. Good evening, I'm Peter Beardmore, 282 Pleasant Street in Lunenburg. I've been advised to advise you that I am speaking this evening as a citizen and parent. Two comments this evening, specific to the preceding agenda item on the facilities. I'm glad for the work that's been done over the course of the last year on the facilities and I'm glad to see that there's some flexibility that's been shown as the situation changes in terms of usage and cost to organizations. That being said, and I didn't notice this when this came up in May, in this case, I'm speaking as an active parent of a player in the Lunenburg Youth Football Organization who just happens to be privy to the information. I'm not a member of the Board, but the Lunenburg Bangles Organization has not agreed nor have they ever paid rent on the storage facility that is behind the turf field. The history on that building is that building was actually built with donated materials by the Lunenburg Bangles Organization. They use the storage, half of it now, and they've maintained that building for 20 years. And I believe I can safely say, speaking for at least the President, that they have not agreed to that and do not intend, just as a matter of principle, of paying rent on that facility. And I would strongly recommend that you invite the leadership of that organization to have a discussion on that point because it has not been made, I know that you have not been made aware of that and it's come before you twice now and that it's an ongoing issue. The second issue I want to bring to your attention is with respect to your operating principles, I realize this is out of sequence, but I brought this up to you before. I don't believe your public comment policy is reflective of the size and spirit and community of Lunenburg or a nearly 300-year tradition of open public comment. But specific to agenda items that include policy, I think that if you're about to take a vote on any matter that reflects on policy, handbooks, budgeting, that you ought to open up for public comment, there might be interesting information from the public that you should take into consideration. Agendas are not detailed and frequently, people don't know the specifics of the presentation or the proposal that you're about to see. And very frequently, the documents that you're looking at are not available and have not been made available to the public either electronically or even physically in the room. And so, the other request I would make is that you mandate that if you are to approve a document, that those documents be available at least in hard copy for the people in the room to look at during and before the meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Oh, reports. I don't think we have any reports. Do we have reports? Been com? Oh, yes. Oh, do we have more public comments?
Need to race up here, Mr. Passios.
It's only 9 o'clock.
I know, I know.
I've been here till 10:00 PM, two nights in a row. Dave Passios, 56 Whiting Street. Been a while since I've been before this Board. I come officially as a member of the Board of Health this evening, sworn to protect the citizens of Lunenburg as well as the environment. First of all, I applaud the district for, in combination with the Board of Health setting up the spraying for Monday night. That's an initial step that I feel is very important. We have, as a Board, have been in phone conversations since early last week daily with updates and contacting the state and mass mosquito control. I get the feel there's been a little bit of disconnect between the Board of Health and the town boards and/or managers of certain entities. There has been some concern about the lines of communication between the Board of Health Office and the school district. I hope that gets patched up soon because we may be, you know, going into a higher and more important step in the next couple of weeks, as no way known. But we have positive tests on mosquitoes in Shirley with Triple E, North Leominster with West Nile virus. And every couple of days, we hear more and more towns having positive tests. Many have taken another step that has been suggested here in Lunenburg, but for the time being, has, it's been chosen not to take that step. I caution that inconvenience is not an excuse for being cautious and protecting the students, the public, and in general, but I understand your position at this point. And also, I'd like to add that Marshall Park has been added and that whole perimeter of streets has been added to the spray program for Monday night. And there will be a reverse 911 call to the entire town on Sunday.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Any more public comment from the public? Okay, Carol, you have a report?
I do. Although I could not attend, I did watch the August 22 Finance Committee meeting. And Mr. Allison from the Planning Board notified the Finance Committee that the Planning Board is starting a master plan using $50,000 from capital planning and seeking a grant to match that. There's also some questions about the joint meeting. The Board of Selectmen is interested, or Select Board as I should call it now. And they were still waiting to hear from us and they were looking at any Thursday in October that the auditorium is open for that particular meeting and the Chairman is going to contact Dr. Burnham. They were setting up a representative for the Building Design Committee and that would be Mr. Passios. And also, there's going to be a committee being set up about level service and how the staffing needs are being developed and what are priorities for both the Select Board and the school committee, but there were no specifics on that. And at the closeout of FY '19, there were surpluses in the account. The free cash has not been certified, but looks like it will be about $1 million. And the Town Manager will make a presentation on the budget process at a September meeting. And if anybody is interested, there is an empty seat on the Finance Committee and the next meeting is September 12th.
I emailed that, the Chair, twice to let her know, so I don't know what she's waiting for.
I don't know that she's got those emails somehow. I don't know.
I I did. So, I'll send her another one. We'll find out what date in October. The auditorium is free. And let her know.
Okay.
Any other reports? I don't
Capital planning, first meeting for this round will be on Tuesday.
Next Tuesday?
Next Tuesday at 5:30 PM.
Okay.
The Athletic Advisory is meeting on Monday at 7:00 PM.
Oh, Monday? Same time as PTO? Just an FYI. I don't know that there is any crossover, but just
Yeah, thanks.
It's good to know, right?
And you have that professional planner document? All those dates are in there, too?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
As a cross-reference.
I don't think there have been any school advisory council meetings.
No, nothing yet.
So, okay. Anything that you want to discuss for future topics? Anything? That jumped out at you guys. That wasn't on the agenda.
Just go ahead and write notes.
Oh, okay.
Make sure I didn't say anything or see anything.
Okay. So, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn at 8:50 PM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.